I now call this committee, meeting of the committee of the whole to order at six o'clock PM. Would you please call the roll?
Ms. Pearson?
Present.
Ms. Chavez?
Here.
Ms. McCall?
Present.
Ms. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Ms. Haley?
Here.
Ms. Stanford?
Here.
With seven present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We will now take a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
As we start each meeting, it's important to remember that the mission of Rockford Public Schools is to collaboratively engage all students in an equitable first-class education for a changing world. Before we go any further, I would like to welcome, and the board would like to welcome everyone, to beautiful historic Lincoln Middle School. This is our second committee of the whole meeting at a school, and we will continue to meet at various locations through the school year. I also would like to thank Kim Pedersen and Erin Hill, who worked behind the scenes to produce the broadcast. And I would like to welcome Superintendent Student Advisory Council member Gustavo Ramirez from Auburn High School. We're now on to the, we're now on to the regular portion of the meeting, which is first meeting minutes from September 2nd, 2025. Are there any additions, corrections, or changes to the meeting minutes? If not, the meeting minutes will be accepted as submitted. Thank you. I will now turn the floor over to Dr. Joe Porter and Johnny Thomas of BWP to present, of BWP to present the data from the leadership profile.
Thanks. Thanks for having us back. As you know, last week, we spent two full days in your community, getting to know all of your stakeholders. And today, we're here to present the leadership profile report. If we can go to the first slide. The superintendent leadership profile, in a nutshell, is a clear and concise and unique description of just the exact superintendent we're looking for in Rockford. And we go about developing that by talking to board members, stakeholder groups, and having an online survey. We hit it from three different angles. And once we have a leadership profile, we use it throughout the process. That is why this portion of the process is so important. We use the profile to recruit candidates. We use it in our marketing and advertising. We develop our interview questions around the leadership profile. And we assess candidates and create scoring rubrics, again, using the specific profile we developed just for you. And it's all about the fit. We like telling people that a superintendent could be very successful in one place, and maybe not so much in another. And it's not that they don't have the right skills, but it might not have been the right fit. So if you can go to the next slide, this one is exciting for us to share with you. In our two days with you, we spoke to 34 different focus groups. There were four of us here. We spoke to 34 focus groups in person, and another four focus groups virtually. So we had numerous focus groups, and we talked to everybody. District administrators, building administrators, your teachers, your union representatives, the support staff in both district and buildings. We talked, our favorite meetings were the two we had with your students, your high school students. That was so much fun for us. We spoke to parents. And then we had some community meetings where it was either community partners and elected officials. So those two days were all about focus groups and meeting people in person. The second piece of information that we're going to glean from is one-on-one interviews that we had with each of the seven board members. Those same questions we asked in the focus groups, we asked your school board, and we gave them an opportunity to wave in individually. And then the final piece was a survey that we made available to anyone who wanted to complete it in your community. And 2,779 people responded. People, board members have asked me to, and people from the press have asked me, what kind of turnout did we get? Is this what was expected? And I'd say the turnout for the in-person focus groups was right in line with what we get in other communities. But the survey results far exceeded, whoops, hello, far exceeded the normal amount that we get. So kudos for the Rockford community making their voices heard. That was a very solid. And you only need 2% to make it valid, and you're way beyond that. So the data we're about to share is something that we're very confident about. Next slide. So how do we do this data analysis? We came out of here last week, the four of us, with a mound of notes. We took notes, we copied down everything that every person said. And now, what do you make of those notes? So we had to run frequency distributions, we looked at it every which way, we were synthesizing it, looking for patterns, and looking for common threads. And so when that work was done, we're able to present it to you tonight. We're going to present this in three phases. I'm going to go through the results of the focus groups. So just looking at what we learned when we sat down with you. Then Dr. Thomas is going to take you through the results of the survey. Not considering the focus groups, what did the survey tell us? Then we'll come back at the end and synthesize those two, and show you how the actual profile turned out. Here we go. Next slide. So when we synthesized the data, the strengths of your community came out pretty clear. The themes were pretty easy for us to take a look at. It's a very prideful, community pride, community support, community engagement. You are a city that wants to be involved, informed. That came through as a great strength. You have a dedicated and talented teaching staff. That came through. How nice to see that in the top two. People, this one, we loved. People spoke of diversity in your district, not as a roadblock, not as something that's challenging, but as a strength. That was very, very powerful message, and we heard it. The next two are about your schools themselves. The pathways for future success, people seem to really appreciate. The career pathways for your high school kids, your business partnerships, your career certifications. Your kids that we spoke to, those high school students, really articulated this well, and they appreciate it. Also, the variety of your educational programs. Everything from the Rockford Promise to AP classes, the Illinois International Baccalaureate. People pointed out your fine arts, your sports, your extracurriculars. There's something that can be special for every student in this district. Student voice is sought out, and they have spirit and leadership. People are proud of your facilities and your technology. And there was a sense, this is awkward to phrase, but we just called it "Rockford on the rise", because there seemed to be a sense that a corner has been turned, and the trajectory is pointing up. Is every problem solved? No. But the trajectory is up. Now, challenges. Next page. Here are the things in the frequency that they were shared in our focus groups that kind of rose to the top. People think the organizational structure and the central office structure should be taken a look at. In today's day and age, does it still meet our needs? Some people thought it was top-heavy, some people thought there wasn't enough support. Just the looking at the structure of the way the district office and the hierarchy is laid out. Communication was huge. I think it came up in every group we spoke to. Communication is not coordinated, it comes out as silos. It's often either communication is lost, or it's repetitive. There are still equity and racial disparities that play out in your schools. Different people, different groups talked about, sometimes they feel like there's two Rockfords. Depends on where you live. Student discipline practices. This one was interesting, because some people were looking for stricter and back-to-suspensions and expulsions, and other people were feeling like there were racial disparities, and that really needs to be looked at. So it was very interesting. It's something to look at, but not sure exactly where the consensus is. Student achievement is low, nobody wants it to stay there. So many people said we need to get the very least to the state average and beyond. People are very troubled by student attendance, the percentage, and trying to figure out why that is. And there was a feeling that the graduation rate could be better. Should be better. Recruitment, retention, and staffing was another topic. Mainly here is positions that go unfilled, or areas where there should be more staffing, and there's not enough staffing. And then the second part, portion of that is getting people to be committed to Rockford and stay. Low staff morale right now. Uneven parent engagement, which means some parents in some neighborhoods are quite engaged and involved in the schools, and others, the schools have real trouble getting their parents to come out and be partners with them. A lack of accountability came up, and having low standards. So your community's saying here, "We want you to raise the bar, and then hold people accountable to it." There's still some inconsistencies in your curriculum. And of all the programs, the only one that came out with frequency was Special Ed. So these are what your stakeholders, who we spoke to in the small groups, identified as your greatest challenge. By the way, if you came to one of those groups and you say, "Hey, I don't, I shared this, this, and this, and I didn't see it up on that list." I want to remind you, we heard every word that every person shared. We wrote down every word that every person shared. But you could imagine how long this report would be if we listed everything. So that's why we only are sharing back the ones that rose to the top. That doesn't mean that the other concerns and issues weren't heard. Finally, we asked those groups, "Well, what are you looking for? What would the perfect match look like?" Well, people want somebody community-oriented and invested. And by that, they meant visible, approachable, accessible, and committed to Rockford in the long run. Nobody wants somebody who's only here as a stepping stone to something else. They'd like to see a committed, long-term educator. Since communication came out as an area of concern, no surprise that a strong communicator, active listener, engages with stakeholders and explains decisions. A champion of equity and inclusion, who is willing to address disparities and supports multilingual and marginalized students. A strategic and results-oriented person, sets clear priorities and aligns people to resources. An experienced instructional leader, who strengthens teaching and learning, familiar with school systems of the same size, diversity, and complexity. This was very important to a lot of people. "Rockford's different," they told us. "You have to know Rockford to be able to be successful here. So you have to, at the very least, come from a similarly large and complex school system." And then finally, acts with integrity. I don't know why this keeps fading out, but. Acts with integrity, transparency, and ethical decision-making. So tuck that away. That's what we learned from the 184 people we spoke to in the focus groups. Dr. Thomas is now going to come up and tell you what we learned with the surveys.
So it's, it's pretty amazing that the surveys really are kind of the voice of the individuals that we didn't have an opportunity to sit down and have conversations with. But some of the themes were almost identical, which tells us that we were on the right path in terms of collecting data and making sure that we're triangulating that data and getting a good lens on what we're looking at here in terms of what the next leader should look like. So we had 2,779 respondents to the survey. 2,629 of them were English speakers, 134 were Spanish, 14 Arabic, and two Swahili. So it went across a large swath of the Rockford community, which we were really, really happy with. 70% of those, 70% of those Rockford residents were Rockford resident, 205 residents. 45% were parents, 24 were parents of former students, 33% were employees, 9% students, and 6% were volunteers in the schools. I want to make sure that I emphasize, you may have had some crossover in that some parents also could be employees, they also could be volunteers. So I want to make sure that we express that part of the survey as well. So in looking at the district strengths, the teachers and staff were, came out as some of the most frequent identifiers as it relates to a strength for the district. The diversity in population, the community.
Could we get a different, could we, Captain Mike? I have signal at the board and in the recording, so it's something with the speakers. So I'm trying to figure it out, but.
The, 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 oh, can I sing? Is that good? The, the community is also, the community was also noted as a, a strength partner. The number of educational programs or options. Classroom technology came out as a strength. And the school and its facilities were also identified as a strength.
Can you try, maybe just hold on just a second and see if that, if he's able to see if there's an issue? He said there's an issue with the speaker and not the microphone.
Testing, testing, one, two, testing, 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 one, two, two, testing, testing. Mic check, mic check, mic check, mic check, mic check, mic check. Testing, testing, mic check, mic check, mic check. All right, we're gonna keep going? So opportunities for improvement, once again, was, was pretty much aligned with what you heard from some of the qualitative information that we gathered. Recruitment and retention of quality, qualified staff. Improving student achievement. Making sure that there's a focus, making sure that there's a focus, making sure that there's a focus on meeting the increasing diverse needs of the student population. Quality of instruction, so making sure that we're paying attention to the quality of instruction. Maintaining positive community relationships. Making sure that we maintain, making sure that we, making sure that we maintain the.
Want to just go off, Mike?
I can do that. Making sure that we maintain positive community relations. Maintain the available educational options and programs for the students. And then, a number of them really want to make sure, because of the impact on taxes and things of that nature, that we are monitoring the financial well-being of the district. So some of the survey qualities that it makes superintendent. The survey turned out that we were looking for an individual that is a strong communicator, someone who can build relationships across the entire community. The person that can work with people in teams and manage people in teams. Someone who understands cultural competency and instructional leaders. They have history, and they understand how to lead the district instructional. Some of the personal skills that also came up in the surveys is that they're a person of integrity, that they're, they are committed to this community. That they're child-centered, a problem solver, and that they champion equity, diversity, and inclusion. Some of the things that I, I just want to make sure, as we kind of get close to here that I mentioned, we, we have been really all over. And I was absolutely amazed at the engagement of, of the community, and how many people want access and have input to how to better the schools and better the community. And so that's a real, real strong example, one that I was truly amazed with. Thanks, Charlie.
So now comes the drum roll, and the big reveal.
If we can go, if somebody asks.
This is the actual leadership profile. Everything we learned from its interviews, from the focus groups, combined with all kinds of high-risk surveys. Did you notice, as Dr. Thomas was going through them, there was tremendous resistance to what the survey said? And what the people said, might not all have been in the same order, but they were all there. So our last job was synthesize those. And this is what we're going to be looking for. Your board's going to be looking for. We're going to be assessing antics around. It's a really impressive, awesome list, and I want to let you get on. We don't just pull out and say, "Profile everywhere we go." We let you develop. And this one, we finally, we need. None of the others that I've ever worked on had some of the things that are on it. Now, some tend to show up on every community. Communication usually does. Being visible and accessible usually does. But there's many that ignore this, that are perfectly weak, never go. Thank you. So this first one's a mouthful. See, but maybe it was too long and complex, but it's just so good. And we think it's so descriptive. You're looking for an inspirational, community-centered, and effort-driven instructional leader who can unite a diverse district around shared vision. Yet we've taken so many important. And the next one's simple and most straightforward. Strong communicator, who engages stakeholders. Guarantee authentic concepts, agree with what you. Highly visible and trusted, engaging with neighbors, staff, family, with partners. This one, we heard a lot mostly from your students. And that's a collaborative census goal. Connecting units, partners, schools, and community partners around shared goal. In other words, let's think all of our energies in a unique, same direction. Got you. Black the word, two words that start with N, decisive and courageous. Good dressing, faculty, systematic challenges, rapport, leading leaders. Joe, can I add to that yet?
Making a lot of the focus groups, the word that was all around, "You make super deal and half speech", is tough. And I just thought it was absolutely amazing. That was a follow-up, first to be on times, that they're, they're acting tough, because they're going to bring in athletes and get the credit. So one of those pretty, really good questions, we hear that across several groups. And we're doing the children, but we shouldn't have run that, it's all first to my point. Have to stand some females that would come to a little bit.
We changed it to courageous, maybe we should have just left it tough.
I ask you to try that while I turn off the speaker.
Testing. Testing, one, two, three? Testing, one, two, three? Hello? Nope. Testing, 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 testing. My people structure that these were, to achieve measurable outcomes. People were saying, in addition to being tough, we want somebody to get the job. And then, we wanted to respect this last one, we heard. Leadership experience in school systems of similar size, diversity, and complexity as both Rockford and the Rockford Public Schools. Those are key points in your profiles. Those didn't come from BWP, they didn't come from your board, they came from the entire Rockford school community. You need to be very, very proud. It's an impressive list, and we can't wait to get it out there and share it with candidates. If you wouldn't mind, we'd like to wrap up with just next steps, to make them get your bearings. And I will take any questions. Charlie?
So next step for us, November 1st, if I have a state campaign to submit their applications. Then, November 4th through 11th, we will begin to conduct interviews, using our leadership profile and matching that leadership profile to the candidates that have applied for the position. November 17th, we will begin to conduct interview preparation with workshops with the board. So we're making sure that we're aligned in how we're going to go about making this very critical decision. And we are going to present the candidate straight. It's typically issued by the body, signed with the fifth. November 24th through 25th, the board would conduct its first round of interviews. November 3rd, I mean, December 3rd and 4th, the board would work to conduct its second round of interviews. Dinner interview and all those other things are optional, and it's up to the board to decide how they want to do that, that second round. And then, December 16th, the board would hopefully give you, make that final decision and finalize any discussion with on track to shoot with the identified candidate. Those are the next steps for us to meet, so.
Thanks. And the only other thing that's not on here is a decision that you need to decide later on. Doesn't need to be made tonight. But somewhere in that December 3rd and 4th, when you're down to two finalists, some board would like to bring in some stakeholders, selected, dissenters, that could maybe do a couple of interviews with. selected, some tiers, that could maybe do a couple of interviews with finalists, share some written input, they're not decision-makers, they would just be there to share, submit the input to you, and you can take it from there. That decision doesn't need to be made for a while, and you need time to have a good discussion. So, that's, that's it for us. Your chance for questions and comments, or anything you'd like to...
Do I? No, I don't think so. I don't think we have much to say.
Most of the last thing is...
You should have a step. So, I'd very give a question.
So, when you get down to your, your, your final candidates, maybe I watch too much news, but there's a story on the news right now about a superintendent right now.
They will be U.S. citizens. We promise.
No, but how, how do you vet your candidates' credentials and qualifications?
We, we've always vetted our candidates well, but in the last five years, maybe eighteen, eight years, because of the rise of social media, so many things on the Internet, we have to do a much deeper dive, because the last thing we want to do is bring you a candidate, have you guys do your own Google search, and then you tell us something that we didn't know. So, we, in addition to reference checks, all the usual, we do our own Google. So, can we take it one step further? We have a professional field that we give the people to, and they've been the deepest dive I've ever seen. We've been using that out for several years. So, when, when we come on the 17th with the five versus seven candidate, they will already totally vet.
Contributed for.
Bad luck.
And then, in this step, of course, just to make sure that we're, we're complying with the law and you need to be due.
Now, does that, is that the same, feel like we're fighting here clinically?
So, if you're talking about their transcripts, and making sure they have a doctorate, which was a part of that story, I know the other part of that story was, it was possible he did have a doctorate, and they reported it out wrong. So, we do get transcripts for those individuals, along with their license numbers and things of that nature, to make sure that they are valid and credible enough.
And we'll be giving you all the documents that we have on the candidates, so another set, sets of eyes on it as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bennett, and you can, please use your microphone, even though we can't hear it, it is being picked up on the recording, so if we can just keep using it like we, like it works, please.
Okay. Perfect. Just one, well, first of all, thank you very much for all of your hard work. I received just feedback from a few different individuals last week that attended groups, and people were very impressed, like how professional the process was, like how, how good, like, conversation was. And so, I just, one, really appreciate all of your hard work and everything that you put into, to doing that, yes. People were very impressed with, like, your level of professionalism, so we appreciate that. Second, on the, this slide in particular, round one interviews, we did some discussions after the last time you came, so those will be December 3rd and 4th. And then, we can get this to you in an email, too. And then, round two would be December 10th and 11th. So, the third and fourth is first round, so...
Could the...
Yes, perfect.
Somebody shoots me an email, correct it on our schedule.
For sure. And then, lastly, then, if, if, if we as a board decide to do that, like, last, say, last two candidates, and kind of have a smaller subset of people do that process, would there be enough time after the December 10th and 11th to be able to do before the 16th meeting? Okay. And then, last question?
Just one night?
Okay.
Somebody from our firm would come out and facilitate it, so that everything runs smoothly, and that we can then get the ready to feedback.
Okay. And then, can you, last thing about that, can you explain the process? Because something that was important to all of us in this process was ensuring confidentiality for individuals when they applied, so making sure that their names are not released until it is appropriate for it to do so. So, can you explain just kind of the confidentiality that would go into that process?
Sure. We, we have been, you guys have been great, the confidentiality's been perfect so far. When we come back and give you the six names, you will be the only ones who know that. When it gets to be the final two, we, and we're going to be bringing in some other people, we're usually very honest with the candidates, and we tell them that by, at this point, you know, we'll still try to keep confidentiality, but there's a chance, when you bring in more people, that it's harder to do. So, we usually tell them, better tell your board that this could happen. As far as the people, let's say we asked three teachers, three parents, three community members, you know, somebody from each, and they formed a group. Whoever that group was, we would have them sign confidentiality agreements before they were allowed to take part in the conversation. So, we do our very best to, for the candidates, maintaining that confidentiality to the very end.
Great, thank you. And my last final question, I promise. Are you able at this time to share out the number of candidates who have applied, like, in most recent time?
Thirty-one. I think thirty-one, thirty-two we have right now, which is, was our goal, and we still have till November 1st. So, I wouldn't be surprised if we push close or over forty. And remember, it's quality, not quantity, but you'd rather have numbers than not numbers. So, we're okay with where we're at.
Thank you.
Ms. Pearson?
Thank you. Did we specifically focus on the state of Illinois, or did we search outside?
National. We have candidates from all over the place.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Chavez?
What is the liquidity of candidates looking like so far?
I'd rather not speculate. We haven't had a chance to even interview anybody yet.
Okay.
But here's what I will tell you. We have a good number of sitting superintendents with experience. We have some deputies assistants and deputy superintendents from big, big school systems that feel, looks like they're ready to go. And so, it's, we have males and females. We have every racial and ethnic group that we can tell at this point covered, so it looks to be very diverse.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Haley?
I just wanted to, since you like feedback, I just wanted to comment. I did attend one of the community listening sessions, and I sat in the back, and the facilitator that was there was very engaging. And although there were just a few people there, they were able to draw, you know, draw information out. They didn't just ask the question and leave it there. They actually rephrased it and drew more information out that was initially not given. So, I appreciate that fact, that they did their due diligence with the, you know, the small group that was there.
I, I appreciate you saying that. There was one community member that I spent several hours with, even after it was time for me to leave, and that person wanted to make sure that I communicated that we not forget the west side of Rockford.
Thank you. Again, thank you very much for all your work and all the time you spent here last week in, in the surveys. I also wanted to take a minute to thank the Rockford Public School communications staff and Laura Fromm for all their efforts in getting the word out on the community listening sessions and, and in the community survey. It really helped, especially getting that strong response from the community survey. I also wanted to thank, I know IT department also helped with the, the virtual sessions, if not other sessions, so I wanted to thank them for that, too. And of course, thank you to all who participated in the survey and the listening sessions. I think you can see that it really gives us a great step to look for what we're looking for, for our next superintendent.
I had one final request, now that we officially presented this, and it totally up to a school board, we can't make a decision like this, but we would love it if you would post a report right on your website for all to see, because candidates are watching your meetings, candidates are checking out your website, and they've been asking me if they could have the leadership profile. I said, "I can't until I share with the board." So, if you would, you've got a nice spot on your website dedicated to the search, if you could put it right there, it would help us, too.
Yes, certainly, we will do that.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. By the way, Rockford was a wonderfully welcoming community. We felt so at ease here, and everybody was so willing to help. So, thanks to you guys as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye. Can we just make sure the dates are corrected on this before it's officially on the website?
Good idea.
Okay.
And I did send that email, Dr. Pardo.
Oh, thank you.
All right. We're moving on to the next part, number four, preview of consent items for governance committee. Are there any questions regarding the governance consent items? Seeing none, we'll move on to the stakeholders committee. And I believe Ms. Stanford will lead the stakeholders committee.
That's not right. You're not...
Oh.
And it went off again. We had it on.
Testing?
Nice or bad?
Yeah, if we just... Had a video.
We've got a lot.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
I just spin that one around.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Okay, it's time for the stakeholders committee portion of the meeting tonight. Let's start by showing our 12-month calendar. One clicker. Okay, our 12-month, our 12-month agenda, our future presentation will be from Jason Pope this evening, executive director of Talon. We want to remind board members of the opportunities available to interact with our students' families and community each month. Please make sure you check the board calendar on rps205.com on a regular basis for the most up-to-date information. Now, let's take a look at the good things happening in our district. Shout-out to Auburn's Plus program team for earning the Team of Excellence Award at Carpenter's Place Celebrate Success Event. For two years, Ms. Williford and Ms. Fish's classes have volunteered weekly at Carpenter's Corners, gaining work skills and giving back to the community. RPS 205 was well-represented at Rockford's Labor Day Parade. Board member Nicole Bennett walked with bus drivers and nutrition services. The REA, our cheer teams, and high school bands showed their spirit. Shout-out to Parade Marshall and Bus Union President Katina Bennett Hicks. Blue and White Night at Whitehead Elementary was full of fun and community spirit last month. Families from Whitehead and Flynn Middle School enjoyed food trucks, games, touch-a-truck experiences, a dunk tank, and more, while connecting with local vendors and services. Guilford High School's Student-Athlete Leadership Team led sports camps at Westview Elementary. Students showing strong behavior attendance in grades joined in basketball, football, soccer, and cheerleading, topped off with ice cream to celebrate their hard work. Maria Montessori at Marsh Students celebrated the International Day of Peace with music, art, and a living peace sign. Activities included a school-wide sing-along, sidewalk chalk, peace art, and a giant peace symbol formed by students and staff. This year's theme was Act Now for a Peaceful World. Next up is items of note with our community partners. Rockford University students came to Flynn Middle School as part of its Jane Addams Day of Service. Faculty, staff, and students volunteered their time painting a mural, drawing with chalk, and breaking the ice with the middle schoolers. Help us celebrate our teachers with a Golden Apple Award nomination. Go to goldenappleofrockford.com and tell them which sixth through 12th grade teachers deserve this special recognition. The deadline to submit is October 16th. The Rockford Promise Scholarship Application is open now through February 5th at 5:00 p.m. High school students can apply for the chance to attend college tuition-free. Don't miss the... Success Event. For two years, Ms. Williford and Ms. Fish's classes have volunteered weekly at Carpenter's Corners, gaining work skills and giving back to the community. RPS 205 was well-represented at Rockford's Labor Day Parade. Board member Nicole Bennett walked with bus drivers and nutrition services. The REA, our cheer teams, and high school bands showed their spirit. Shout out to Parade Marshall and Bus Union President Katina Bennett-Hicks. Blue and White Night at Whitehead Elementary was full of fun and community spirit last month. Families from Whitehead and Flynn Middle School enjoyed food trucks, games, touch-a-truck experiences, a dunk tank, and more while connecting with local vendors and services. Guilford High School's student-athlete leadership team led sports camps at Westview Elementary. Students showing strong behavior attendance in grades joined in basketball, football, soccer, and cheerleading, topped off with ice cream to celebrate their hard work. Maria Montessori at Marsh Students celebrated the International Day of Peace with music, art, and a living peace sign. Activities included a school-wide sing-along, sidewalk chalk, peace art, and a giant peace symbol formed by students and staff. This year's theme was Act Now for a Peaceful World. Next up is items of note with our community partners. Rockford University students came to Flynn Middle School as part of its Jane Addams Day of Service. Faculty, staff, and students volunteered their time painting a mural, drawing with chalk, and breaking the ice with the middle schoolers. Help us celebrate our teachers with a Golden Apple Award nomination. Go to goldenappleofrockford.com and tell them which 6th through 12th grade teachers deserve this special recognition. The deadline to submit is October 16th. The Rockford Promise Scholarship application is open now through February 5th at 5:00 p.m. High school students can apply for the chance to attend college tuition-free. Don't miss this life-changing opportunity. Apply today at rockfordpromise.org. Napleton Subaru-Rockford partnered with Adopt a Classroom and Guilford High School during Subaru Loves Learning Month. Teachers Ruth O'Donnell, Nathan Kirschman, Michelle Tucker, Erin Craig, Ryan Callahan, and Megan Joy each received kits and $500 for classroom supplies. And on our 205 Vibe, we've officially launched our search for our next superintendent. The board is partnering with BWP and Associates, a national search firm, to lead an open, transparent process. Read more on the 205 Vibe. And now it's time for legislative news. U.S. Senator Tammy Duckworth was at Jefferson High School on September 6th for a Rockford Town Hall. This was an opportunity for invited constituents to connect with the senator with moderator Steve, State Representative Dave Vella, to learn more about her efforts at the federal level and connect with local community resources. It's now time for our feature presentation. Please welcome RPS 205's Executive Director of Talent, Jason Pope, who will provide us an update on recruitment efforts. Mr. Pope, the floor is yours.
They fooled me. All right. I don't have to use my teacher voice. Good. I haven't dusted that off in a while. I can't see the screen, though, so I'm going to do my best. I'll pop out quite a bit because I don't necessarily remember every slide. This isn't, that's not my presentation. There we go.
Jason, you can use my iPad.
Okay, cool.
It'll follow along.
Well, you can just, yeah, you can just click it and slide it as you need to.
Cool. All right, so before I get into my presentation, I just want to say a few things. I have what is probably the best job in all of RPS 205. I absolutely love the work that I do. I get to work with our students, our staff, university students across the region to try to bring teachers to RPS 205. My team has been recognized multiple times by our board, by our district, by members across our state for the work that we do. And I say that to say this. There is many people across the district that help in this work, and I think they need to be recognized, too. So as my team's been fortunate to be recognized for some of this work, we have a lot of people in our district that participate in this work. It's important work, and I'd like to see them be recognized, too. So I'm just going to say a few names, and as you see them out in our buildings, please tell them thank you. Tell them how much we appreciate the support they give the recruitment team in bringing teachers into RPS 205. So our entire board and cabinet for the unwavering support for the work that we do, our curriculum team with Elvina Ivy, Josh Rapon, Acacia Ford, Annie Pfeiffer, and Heidi Detman, they continuously help us build out these pathways and support our student teachers. Our schools team led by Morgan with Blake, Andrea, Heather, and Sarah continuously work with our student teachers and our employees on their pathways into the classroom. Our finance team, who continuously finds ways to fund these initiatives that we do across our district to support teachers into the district. And then, an amazing amount of principals and teachers across our district that support our student teachers, and all the candidates I try to bring in their schools. Jake Sayre, the principal here at Lincoln, continuously is one of those people that will go out of his way to help future educators feel welcomed in RPS 205. So as you see them across the district, please give them a thank you. So tonight, I'm going to kind of, we do a lot of things in recruitment, but tonight I'm really going to focus around what I call three big tenants. And this is around what we'd call our teacher pathways. And for the audience, I apologize. I know that screen keeps going in and out. I promise there's some really cool stuff on these slides. If everybody wants shifts down and go to that side, I won't be upset. So that's my teacher advice. Go that way. But anyways, so we do some really big things, but tonight I want to focus around three specific pathways. The first one being our student-to-teacher focus. So helping RPS students get into the classroom as certified teachers. The second is staff-to-teachers. So finding those future educators across our district that are in those important support roles, working with our kids, helping them earn their teaching license and get into the classroom as a teacher. And then finally, the work that we do around student teaching, which I call the low-hanging fruit. That is where I think we can have one of the biggest impacts, is building a very robust and rewarding student teaching experience. So our first pathway, the RPS students to RPS teachers. On the screen, you'll see Antonio Ramirez. Antonio is a teacher here at Lincoln. He is a graduate of our Rockford University Education Pathway student. I've had the privilege to be in Antonio's classroom many times. He is an outstanding educator and a true inspiration of what our RPS students can be as future educators across the district. He's a teacher here at Lincoln. He's about to finish his master's degree in urban education. He's expressed interest in earning additional endorsements in ESL education and eventually wants to become a principal and school leader as well. So just an example of what our pathway really can mean for our students and ultimately our district as we move forward.
Yeah, his dad's here. His proud dad right there. Tony, raise your hand. Yeah.
I did not know that was your son. Awesome. So for those that aren't familiar with our Rockford University Education Pathway, it is a three-course sequence that we've built at our high schools that allows our students that have expressed an interest in education to become more immersed in a career in education. So throughout their sophomore and junior, junior and senior year, they take a three-course sequence. They get opportunities to go back into elementary schools, work with kids again. They get to see teaching from the teacher's side of the table, and we really try to engage them and interest them in careers in education. From there, they can attend Rockford University at a significantly reduced tuition rate. It's about an 80% tuition reduction. Throughout their four years in college, the district and Rockford University provides a lot of wraparound supports to them to help them across the finish line. And then if they come back and teach in Rockford Public Schools, they can take access of our urban education master's degree and get their education paid for by the district. So it's one way that we want to get our students into our classrooms. We know as, as we fight against this national teacher shortage, the best way to make great teachers for Rockford Public Schools is to help our kids become those teachers. Those are the ones that are going to have the biggest impact on our classrooms down the road. So as we look at some of the success of the education pathway, currently this school year, we have 35 graduates of that program as certified teachers in classrooms across the district. Man. So 35 graduates of the program in schools across the district. The next number is something I'm really excited about. Of those 35 graduates, a third of them are in hard-to-fill teaching positions: special education, bilingual education, math, and science. So not only are our students filling our teaching vacancies, they're filling the teaching vacancies that we need the most. They're filling those hard-to-fill classrooms. If we project out specifically around that bilingual teaching piece, and we look at these 86 students that are on track to student teach over the next three to four years, almost a third of those students are earning bilingual and ESL endorsements as well. So we are going to start to make some real gains on our bilingual teaching vacancies over the next several years from our own students. And then that last number on the bottom, last year, it's actually been about, it's almost two years ago now, I think. We just got the money this last year, but we secured a $300,000 grant from Senator Duckworth to enhance our education pathway. Currently through that grant, we've been able to provide an additional $50,000 in tuition reduction for those students that are in the pathway, and we've been able to provide housing for 15 pathway students over the last year and a half. Over the life of that grant, we are going to be able to offer $150,000 in tuition reduction for those students and housing for up to 25 students while they're enrolled in college. So really thankful for the grant we were able to get from Senator Duckworth's office. All right, let's transition into staff pathways. So on this screen, you'll see Joseph Wagner and Kiki Perez. They are both... Man, what is going on? All right, I'll try to, okay. So Joseph Wagner and Kiki Perez, they're both part of our Second Leap Cohort. They are currently working as building support professionals at Kennedy Middle School. They will both be student teaching this spring and then moving into full-time, or, sorry, they're student teaching right now, and they will both be transitioning to full-time special education teaching positions starting in January as part of the Second Leap Cohort. So our LEAP cohort is a pathway for our staff members, and we have a couple different ones. The LEAP cohort is specifically designed to create more special education teachers. We take staff that are in support roles like paraprofessionals that have at least an associate's degree, and in partnership with NIU, they work full-time in their support role during the day, supporting kids. They take courses in an accelerated cohort format through NIU to earn, to finish their bachelor's degree, earn their teaching license, and their LBS1, their special education teaching endorsement. We provide a lot of additional wraparound support for them while they're in that program. They're providing services to kiddos, they're finishing school, and then they come back and teach in our district for at least three years in a special education teaching position. Our first cohort graduated in 2023, and we currently, this school year, have 18 special education teachers that were graduates of that program. Right slide. Our second cohort, which is currently student teaching right now and will be graduating December, will have 18 of those people, 18 of those, I call them kiddos, but they're not, most of them are adults, my age or older. But they'll be transitioning into full-time special education teaching positions starting in January in the schools that they're currently serving in. The LEAP program originated out of Rockford in 2022. We were one of the original founders that created that program in partnership with U46. And I have to say, this program has just not only shown great results for us, but is reverberating across the state. So other districts have reached out to us in NIU and asked, "How do we build something similar?" And Senator Durbin actually just gave NIU a fairly large grant to create a regional LEAP cohort for rural school districts. So things that are starting in RPS are reverberating across the state around teacher recruitment. So our RISE program, similar to our LEAP program, built in the same facet, we take student support, we take employees in student support roles that have an associate's degree, and they do a two-year track to complete their degree. But this one was with an emphasis on elementary education. So we currently have 20 staff that are in that program that will be student teaching this spring and then moving into certified teaching roles in the fall. One of the great things about the RISE program is when we developed it, we worked with a lot of our community partners, our parents and our students, and NIU actually took feedback from all three of those groups and designed four electives that are built around the Rockford community, and only students in the RISE program receive those courses. They're taught by Rockford community leaders, and the idea is to make those teachers better teachers in Rockford, to really know about the historical context of Rockford, the educational context, and really to have a better connection with our students and our families so they can be effective educators in all Rockford public schools. This next slide just kind of shows how these programs are impacting our schools. So we talk a lot about these teacher pathways, but I also think it's good to see where are these students ending up. What schools are being impacted by our education pathway, our LEAP program, and our RISE program? And what this slide really emphasizes is all our schools across the district are seeing an ROI. We're seeing these, these employees and these students matriculate back into all of our schools. I broke them into three tiers. So that first tier is schools that have at least five staff or more in certified teaching roles through these programs. Tier two is schools that have three to four staff, and tier one is schools that have at least one to two. So you can see across the district, all of our schools are being impacted by these programs. But I really want to call out Auburn High School. Auburn High School is leading the charge. They have the largest number by a wide margin with 12 staff or students that are in teaching roles through these pathway programs. And it speaks to the work that former Principal Jenny Kefer and current Principal Ryan Nochreiner have done to build a culture around developing and cultivating young talent, getting them into their building to work with kids, and then finding pathways for them to get into the classroom and supporting them at the building level. So the work being done to kind of really grow their own students and staff into teachers, I think definitely deserves to be recognized. So then, the, one of the last things, our last big tenant is student teaching. And I'm going to give a little historical context on this to talk about where we were and where we are now. So when we look at student teaching, if we go back about four years, I would classify our student teaching program as hope and pray. Let's hope that universities send us students, and let's pray they stay in Rockford. And about four years ago, we decided to completely tear that down and start over. We really wanted to get aggressive with universities and really get them sending more kids to Rockford. And then when they're here in Rockford, we want to do all the things to get them to want to stay. I always like to tell universities, when we get kids here, we want them to do three things: fall in love with our kids, fall in love with our buildings, fall in love with our city. If we can do those three things, we can keep them long-term in the classroom. So that has really been our focus: growing our university partnerships, getting more student teachers here. When they're here, giving them a really great experience, giving them a lot of professional development, mentorship, and really helping guide them through that process, and then getting them into the classroom. So this slide kind of illustrates the life cycle of a student teacher. That first column, really looking at a student who's in their freshman through junior year. So one thing I think we do really well compared to any other school district in the state is we start working with student teachers their freshman year in college. We don't wait till they're placed in our district for clinical hours or student teaching. We spend a lot of time on campus, in classrooms, working with future educators, and talking to them about not only the field and the career, but everything that Rockford has to offer. We want to get them excited, so when it's time for them to do their clinical and method hours, come in and do observations, they're requesting Rockford Public Schools, whether they're an RPS grad or they're from another area completely. We want them to really think about us. And then, once they're here doing those observation hours, we want to make that experience so good that they only want to student teach here. And then when they student teach here, again, we want to make that experience so great that Rockford is the only place they want to teach. So starting that freshman through junior year, you can see we do a lot of different things to engage them and get them excited about Rockford. When it's time for them to student teach, we put a lot into them. All of our student teachers start out every semester with a full-day professional development workshop led by our curriculum team. We do a deep dive in curriculum instruction, classroom management strategies. The student teachers get to network together and build their own support network with each other so they don't feel like they're on an island as well. Throughout their semester of student teaching, we pull them out of the classroom several times and do some continued professional development opportunities around the Danielson framework, and then really make sure they're involved in their school's PLC. We, throughout the year, we will pull, we will give them tours of different buildings, connect them with principals, and then we bring in community members, too. So it's not only RPS they're seeing, we want them to get involved in the community and get to know Rockford because we want them to stay. You can see, then, we also offer housing and compensation. So I will say, this has been a huge game changer. This is probably what has moved our numbers greater than anything. And it's not only that we're providing housing and compensation, but it's really the strategy behind it. So when we look at housing, the housing is really an effort to get students who are not necessarily from the Rockford region. So we can pull students from NIU that come from a 30- to 40-minute window from Rockford pretty easily. We can pull Rockford University students. That gives us a pretty small pool to work with, though. If we want to get aggressive with schools like Illinois State, the University of Iowa, all of the educator prep programs throughout Wisconsin, and then some of these Midwest schools that have really good programs, we have to provide opportunities to get these kids here. And that's what the housing does. It provides opportunities for students who want the chance to teach in a large urban district with a diverse student population the chance to do that. The compensation also allows student teachers to just be student teachers. Like, the pay helps attract them, but it also helps them focus on student teaching. We don't want student teachers to have to work a part-time job or have some of those other burdens that may stop them from crossing the finish line. We want to make sure when they get in the classroom, they can get into the classroom as a certified teacher as well. The compensation housing is also working as far as attracting those other students. So I will use the Illinois State University as an example. Traditionally, we will get three to four students a semester from Illinois State, and those are kids that are from Rockford. They're, they're going to come, they're going to live at home while they student teach. What we can't get from ISU is all those kids from suburbs, all those kids from Chicago, and the middle of the state. The housing allows us to do that. It's allowing those It's allowing those students that want that opportunity to be here to be here. This semester, five of our six apartments are filled with ISU students. Next semester, all of our apartments except for one are filled with ISU students. And a lot of them are coming in content areas that we need here in the district. The compensation is also driving students here. So those students that maybe don't need housing, but live 45 minutes to an hour from here without compensation that wouldn't student teach, they're willing to make that commute because of that compensation. And then they're getting a better student teaching experience. It's preparing them better for the field. And then we, we end every semester with a big student teacher celebration where we support them and that's really our big recruitment push. A lot of administrators come in and help. And then when they transition into the classroom, there's a lot of continued support for them in that first and second year. And these are the results. So currently, we have about 20 university partners that we work with continually around student teaching and some of our other pathway programs. And we host about 120 student teachers a year. If we look back four years ago during our, our hope and pray period, we were averaging about 60, maybe 70 student teachers on a good year. So we have doubled those numbers in just four years. And I will tell you, the more student teachers that we can get in the district equates to more teachers in the classroom the next year. Two slides left, almost done. So the next program I want to talk about is a continuation of our student teaching and that's our aspiring teacher program. And this is our year-long student teaching placement. So this is really designed to, to better prepare educators for their first year in the classroom. Unfortunately, as, as much support as we can give those traditional student, those traditional student teachers that are in a semester-long placement, 16 weeks just isn't enough to prepare for your first year in the classroom. If you student teach in the fall, you get the opportunity to build relationships with kids, set some classroom management strategies, build some structure. What you don't get to do is see student and growth achievement. If you student teach in the spring, you are stepping into an established classroom. Every student in that classroom knows you're a student teacher. We see that student teachers that can spend an entire year in a classroom with a really high-quality teacher by their side are just better prepared to enter the field and tend to stay in the field longer. We see when teachers leave the field, it's typically in the first three to five years and the feedback we hear is they just didn't feel prepared to be in the classroom on their own. The aspiring teacher program works to alleviate that. Through our aspiring teacher program, this current school year, we have 69 graduates of the program that are in classrooms in RPS this year. We have 21 aspiring teachers in our schools this year. We rebuilt that program three years ago. It was very decentralized at one point where our aspiring teachers were spread out across the district and what we did was try to find really good cooperating teachers to put them with, but they weren't working together. They weren't creating a network of support. They weren't truly supported in the building as a whole. So we condensed the program into just three buildings at the elementary level and really follow a medical residency model where there's an aspiring teacher and what we call an MCL at every grade band in that building for those three schools. And it's really providing the support they need. And then if we look of those 69 graduates that are working in the district, 72% of those graduates have either reached tenure or on track to reach tenure. So the program's working. So I will finish with what's next. So what we have coming up on the horizon, the first thing is our BRIGHT program and I'm, I'm really excited about BRIGHT. So built in kind of the model of LEAP and RISE, this will be another staff-to-teacher pathway, but this is specifically around bilingual education. This will take staff members who are working in those support roles and be able to provide a teaching license in a bilingual endorsement in Spanish, Arabic, or Swahili. We're looking at, it'll be a 25-seat cohort. Right now, our numbers are looking like about 15 seats for Spanish, five for Swahili, five for Arabic. That could change, those numbers could change a little bit based on need over the next year and the candidates we get. But what's extremely exciting about this program, as we're with our LEAP and RISE program, candidates have to have an associate's degree to get into it. What we've done with this program is work with both Rock Valley College and Northern Illinois University and it'll deliver a four-year degree in three years. So candidates will need no previous college experience. We'll be able to take candidates that have no college coursework, get them into a support role for three years supporting our kids, help them finish their degree, and then they will stay and teach in the district for at least five. I'm really excited about that one. American Board is an alternate licensure pathway I've recently found through the ROE. Very high level. This will, this could allow us to help a lot of our subs in the district that have bachelor's degrees but don't have a teaching license, create a very cost-effective and fast way to licensure. It's about $2,000 a candidate in nine months. Our biggest roadblock to getting our non-certified staff to certification that have bachelor's degrees is most of the time they have to go through a master's program and that's expensive. And a lot of times candidates just can't afford it. This will be very cost-effective and very quick to do. I see us being able to do cohorts of 10 to 20 staff at a time, provide some wraparound support for them and really get a lot of our subs into those certified positions where they've kind of been serving for a few years already, but in a higher capacity. The curriculum team and I have built out what I call a math educator task force. So we are working with a lot of our math educators across the district and really it's got three focuses. The funnel, which is how do we get more people to want to become math teachers? The pipeline, which is once we get them in, once we get them through the funnel and into programs, how do we get them to want to come to Rockford Public Schools and teach math? And then the last piece is how do we keep the math teachers we have? And that'll be the big piece that we focus on. And then the last thing, our next big university partner we want to work to build a relationship with is Jackson State. So Jackson State has, there's really two reasons we want to target Jackson State. They have a large contingent of students that come from the Midwest, so the Chicagoland area, which those are students that we can draw back to Rockford. They also have a very highly recognized educational program. They produce really good teachers. All right, any questions?
Ms. Haley?
I just have a question. Regarding the, the American Board program, how long did you say that was?
So with the American Board program, it advises candidates, so it's self-paced. It advises candidates, it should take nine months on the fast end, up to a year. So anywhere between nine months to a year, depending on how quickly the candidate wants to move through it. What we would actually look at doing if we do that though is building out a cohort model where we have a group of employees going through that sequence together and hiring somebody like a retired principal or retired teacher that could kind of lead them through that coursework and serve as like a completion coach. So we, we want to really sequence it out for them so it's not like, if, if we make it self-paced and we just send 20 people out in ether to do it, two or three are going to complete it. If, if we can create a cohort of 10 to 20 and we can put that wraparound support around them, we can get 10 or 20 across the finish line.
Anyone else? Ms. McCall?
Thank you. I'm sorry. First, I just want to highlight that Jackson State is an HBCU.
It is.
I'm very grateful for that collaboration. Additionally, I have a question. So for these cohorts, it's at any level of staff or do they have to be paraprofessionals?
So that is a great question. So the way that NIU is able to accelerate some of this coursework is by giving them credit for work experience. So to do that, they have to be specifically in a role front-facing with kids. So example, if you're working at the administration building, if you're a school secretary, unfortunately, your work experience doesn't equate to college credit in that course. So paraprofessionals, behavior intervention specialists, parent liaisons, building support specialist, you have to be in a building working with kids on a daily basis.
And then secondly, I know you mentioned it, but I needed you to just kind of repeat it. So say I'm a new person coming to the community, I start with the, as a sub or a paraprofessional, how much time will I have to have been employed by RPS to take advantage of this program?
So we, we want to see a little bit of work experience. So we look at typically about a year as kind of that benchmark. If somebody has less than a year, but they have, in the time that they've been working with the district, have really good work history with the district, have referrals from their administrator and a few teachers in the building and maybe a community referral, I think we would consider them as well too. Especially when we look, and I'll have more details coming out about the BRIGHT cohort soon, but that one is tentatively planning to launch next fall. So we, the contracts are working through negotiation right now, but as soon as those are completed, we're going to start recruitment. So I anticipate being able to start recruitment for those programs late this fall. So we're going to have to get creative with some of those candidates.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bennett?
Could you give a brief update on the pathways and the recruitment efforts for social workers?
Yeah, so our, we, through the SWOT grant, we started the BSW program with the University of Illinois. We currently have three staff members that are working towards completing their BSW, which would then move into, so this coming fall, they'll be doing their internship in what we call a non-certified social worker role, really handling tier one and tier two interventions at a building level. And then we've recently just had another discussion about expanding that into a master's program for certified social workers. I do have a tentative meeting with Rockford University to build that pathway out. But we are also building that pathway within our high school academies. So how the academy would tentatively look is similar to our education pathway. Our high school students could go through the social work pathway, through the Rockford Promise Scholarship, then go to Rockford University to earn their BSW, come back and teach in Rockford Public Schools, and then through Rockford Public Schools, complete an MSW while working as a non-certified social worker to move into a certified social worker role. So as we continue these conversations with Rockford University and the SWOT team, I will keep you apprised on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I did have, I'm sorry, one additional question. So how long will, like, so we have BRIGHT, we have LEAP, and we have RISE. How long will these programs last, right? So will it keep, is this something that's going to continue to go to keep getting, you know, like math teachers and the special education teachers?
If you guys keep giving me money, I'll keep building out programs and I'll keep trying to get teachers in the district. But to answer your question seriously, the LEAP program is something that I think tentatively we could do indefinitely because the need for special education teachers is so great and this is our greatest way to attack that need. The RISE program is something that we could do in cycles because its focus on elementary education. There's also a large number of elementary education teachers in the pipeline. There's not a large number of special education teachers in the pipeline. I would love to be able to build something out around some of those other hard-to-fill areas like math and science. That is extremely more difficult because of the way that those degrees are held at the university level. So elementary education, early childhood, special education, bilingual education, those are housed within the College of Education. We can work with the College of Education to build those pathways out. If somebody wants to be a math teacher, they don't go through the College of Education. They go through the College of Mathematics and Sciences. And those college, those parts of the university aren't as favorable in building out cohorts like the College of Education is. So we have to get a little creative with them. The other component becomes that entry point of an associate's degree. Every so many years, we exhaust that pool of candidates internally and we have to build it back up. So we can't realistically do a LEAP program every year because we just don't have the candidate pool to support it. So we need to do one, give a few years to build that pool back up and then do another one. And another thing that I would like to look at in the future is how do we build an associate's degree pipeline to then transfer into those other pipelines?
Okay, and the final thing. So we have this BRIGHT where we're offering people with no bachelor's degree or no associate's degree and they can come and get through this program. So have you looked at the LEAP and the RISE to see if there's any adjustments that could be made to allow more participants by, again, alleviating that associate's degree portion and doing that? So have that been looked at and?
So when we decided to build out the BRIGHT program, this was the first time that we looked at, hey, we need an associate's degree pathway. But now that we have, excuse me, now that we have that built out, we could easily work with NIU and RVC to add that associate's piece into these other pathways. So once that BRIGHT program gets running and we see how that works, we could easily build that into those other programs. And that might be a better sustainable pipeline in the future. It is just, it's obviously doing that, it's more expensive. I will say, it's also significantly harder on the candidates. The BRIGHT program's going to be unique because we're asking people to do a four-year degree in three years. They're going to have no breaks for three straight years. They're going to be working full-time, they're going to be taking classes in the fall, the winter, the spring, and the summer for three years straight. So it's going to be intense. So with that, we have to make sure we get the right candidates into those, into those seats that can handle that workload, but then we also need to support them. And that's going to be a key component between RPS, RVC, and NIU. What do those wraparound supports look like to make sure we're getting those students across the finish line? Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Okay, I have actually a couple of questions. The first one is, I know like these are all great factors that seem to have succeeded, right, in recruiting, you know, student teachers and current teachers or new teachers. And for the bilingual program, are there any other special efforts that you're doing to recruit, recruit more bilingual teachers or student teachers?
So I can speak kind of historically of what we've done or kind of what is in the pipeline. So BRIGHT will be one of the big things that we want to do for Grow Your Own through the Rockford University Education Pathway. And I can attribute most of this success to Jefferson High School, but the candidates coming into the pathway through Jefferson High School, the majority of them are bilingual and are working towards either a bilingual or ESL endorsement. So as, as we project out over the next three to four years, I anticipate a large number of those candidates coming out of that program with those bilingual endorsements in Spanish. We had done a partnership with the Illinois State Board of Education hosting international teachers. We've had, I would call minimal success with that program for a variety of reasons. But I think really if we want to really move the needle on bilingual education in our district, we have to focus on homegrown talent. We have to find our students and our community members that want to be teachers in our district and then help them get into the classroom.
So I'm glad to hear, I'm happy to hear about Jefferson High School or specific schools is, is leading in that. What else, what other support can be given to continue that or be a stronger pathway?
Yeah, so I would say probably the two biggest things from a support lens is when we get ready to start recruiting for BRIGHT, I need connection with candidates that are interested in our community and getting them into the district in those support roles so we can get them into those pathways. And then from the school lens, when we work with our pathway students, it's identifying those students that maybe haven't picked education as their career, but getting them kind of into that idea too. So there's a lot of students that don't know what they want to do after high school. Let's start talking to them about education as well and getting them into some classrooms to see what teaching's all about.
And I'm hoping with the special as well as bilingual, like they will have the resources that they would need then?
I'm sorry, can you?
With the bilingual, with the bilingual as well as special, that they will have the resources that they need to be successful then?
I, I guess I don't understand the question.
Like, they would be successful in their classroom, they will have the resources that they need.
So as, are you talking about when they step into the classroom as a certified teacher?
Yes.
So they would go through their traditional bachelor's degree program, go through every, I guess I'm not understanding the question?
Let me rethink and rephrase them I had and I'll get back to you.
No problem.
And the second thing is, is it too soon to say like, they can have like a lens or view, bird eye view of like what the retention has been with these programs with?
Did he say that already?
Yeah, like what has been the retention so far? Was they're staying beyond their contracted time or is it too soon to say?
So right now, it's too soon to see. The first LEAP cohort is, we'll be going into year three next year. And they're on a three-year agreement. The second LEAP cohort will be three years starting next year, like we'll be entering year one next year. The RISE cohort will be entering year one next year. So I anticipate high retention because they've all, almost all of our LEAP and RISE candidates, our Rockford natives, have grown up in the district, attended the district, have worked in the district, like this is home to them. And we know that's why the Grow Your Own initiatives really is the best way to get the best teachers here in Rockford and keep them here. You're welcome.
Anyone else?
All right, I'm going to run away before there's any more questions.
I was going to ask one quick question, maybe, maybe two. You mentioned the RPS on-campus presence. What colleges is that or do you have a present at?
Yep. So the biggest ones would obviously be Rockford University and NIU. Spent a lot of time at both those schools. I spend some time down in ISU, Central State University. The University of Iowa is one we've recently really been trying to grow partnership with. The University of Iowa, when we went there last year and spent some time with their College of Education, they have 600 kids in their College of Education. Last year was the first year that they had more students from Illinois than Iowa. 51% of their kids from the COE come from Illinois. A lot of those are Chicago area and those are kids that we can draw. A lot of those are Chicago area and those are kids that we can draw back. So, as we work with universities, we're always trying to get on campuses when we can. But the big ones would be NIU, Rockford University, ISU, National Lewis a little bit, they're more of an online school, Iowa, and then Central State.
Thank you. You know, I, I don't know if it goes without saying, but obviously recruiting teachers who were RPS students is a great way to, you know, make sure that we're getting teachers who represent the diversity of RPS students. And so, I appreciate all your work in doing that.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have one final thing.
Shoot.
Just got triggered, so blame Paul. But, can, do you have a plan as far as, once these students complete their program and they get, you know, get their bachelor's degree or whatever? I know that the licensure test is something that's very, very difficult for students to pass, especially the math portion. Is there something that's ingrained into these programs to help assist with that particular section of the licensure exam to try to be able to help increase the students in their graduations? I know from Central State, there were a lot of students that come in, they cannot get past the Illinois State, State of Illinois Licensing Program. And I don't want that to be another barrier for like Jackson State, you know, coming from Mississippi.
Yep.
You know, is there something that can be ingrained in there to help assist these participants in actually obtaining their licenses when they're done student teaching and everything to be successful teachers in our district?
Yep. So, the universities traditionally will have that built into their program. But as we're seeing, sometimes that's not enough support. What we are starting to see is universities pivot away from allowing people to student teach without passing their content exam. So, historically, universities have allowed people to student teach without passing their content exam. And then, they have so much time, either before graduation or even after graduation, to pass their exam and get licensed. Because more and more students are struggling with passing the content exams, universities are now starting to require them to pass those content exams before they student teach. Not every university is fully transitioned to that, but a lot have. What that means is student teaching numbers might go down in the intermediate. But in the long run, I think that we'll see, the universities will then provide better supports to them to make sure more of their students are getting into student teaching, ultimately graduating, getting in the classroom, which means the student teachers that will be coming in will be ready to get in the classroom as soon as they graduate. We try to provide some support with them too. It's, I'll be honest with you, it's tough because a lot of that stuff is governed by the university. So, we will try to support them to the best of our ability. But really, that is a university factor to be able to help them cross that finish line and graduate.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Have we checked into possibilities of pre-testing prior to, as that fall on the university as well?
So, I get, when you say pre-testing, can you give me an example?
The student teachers that we have, that are, that's, you know, that's in the program. Is there any way, or do you know of any resources that offer? Or is there any way that they can take a pre-test for their license?
Yep. So, there is an organization that most of the universities utilize, and we've utilized it for some stuff too. It's called 240 Tutoring. So, 240 Tutoring will actually give the students some tutoring support, and then they provide sample tests for them that match with the state content exams. And typically, students that can pass those pre-tests tend to do well on the state exams too. Some universities do a really good job of utilizing 240 Tutoring, some do not. Some students really utilize it, some do not. We also know some people unfortunately just are not good test takers. So, really need to work with the schools to figure out how to get those individuals across the line too.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Pope.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. We have just a few more slides to get through on our deck, and then we'll move on. Okay, for some internal, external news. Earlier this month, a few of our school board members had the opportunity to attend the Consortium of State School Board Association Legislative Advocacy Conference held in Washington DC from September 7th through the 9th. The purpose of the conference is to develop ongoing relationships with members of Congress and their staff for the purpose of influencing policy. Members were able to engage with Illinois federal legislators, Senators Tammy Duckworth and Dick Durbin, and House Representatives Darren LeHood and Eric Sorensen to advocate on behalf of the students and staff of RPS 205 and to share perspectives on important issues. Top federally funded legislative priorities discussed with legislators included requests for full funding of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, funding for mental health supports, Title I and Title II, A, teacher and principal recruiting. School board members were also given the opportunity to share the positive impacts of programs created and funded by Congress for schools, students, families, and educators. Congratulations to the Greater Rockford Chamber of Commerce's 40 Under 40 Honoree Nicole Bennett. All the honorees, all the honorees were recognized at their reception on September 16th. Board member Tiana McCall and myself joined other local elected officials for Rockford Area Habitat for Humanities Legislative Build Day. We constructed walls with the help of volunteers. The homes that are being built are located in the Emerson Estate subdivision behind Auburn High School. And it was really hot that day. Do any board members have anything to share regarding any events you've attended or any interactions you've had in the community? Ms. McCall?
I just wanted to say that, thank you to all the contractors and everybody who put up these houses and stuff because it took me well over 15 minutes to get one screw in. Oh, well, not even a screw, see, it was a nail to hammer a nail in. It was just, I will happily pay you guys to do that.
It's way harder than it looks.
Way harder than it looks. Secondly, I'd just like to, again, just recognize our student athletes. Over the weekend, I've attended several flag football, junior football, all kinds of football things. And the students are really, really excited, you know, when you see people, people from the community at their games and things encouraging them. Also, the open houses and the parent-teacher conferences. I attended the ones at Auburn High School, and it was just greatly attended by, by the parents and students as well. I used some of that time to, to hear from the teachers, you know, the challenges, I'm sorry, and, and different things that they face, you know, so far at the first, first quarter, what is it, second quarter or whatever. I have received positive feedback about the school lunches from some of the students. They were, they were on me the last couple of years about the food being nasty or whatever. But this year's been so far so good. So, I want to send a shout-out to all of our nutrition services and things regarding that. Just want to let you guys know that the students are watching, they are, they are coming in and commenting to me at least, you know, I guess, I don't know, feel like they, they think they can tell me anything. But the food has been good so far. And additionally, just, just thank you guys for showing up today at Lincoln Middle School. I think this is a great opportunity for, for us as a board to see, you know, different schools in action that's not directly in our, our districts, sub-districts. And that's it, thank you.
Ms. Pearson?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Stanford. So, outside of athletic events, I had an opportunity to participate in the breast cancer walk. A lot of parents on the track. It was an awesome event. I survived it and I'm grateful. But I want to encourage those that are in the fight of breast cancer to be encouraged. And we certainly are grateful for those that made it over and out with positive outcomes. Lastly, I wanna recognize our lunch, breakfast and lunch aid workers. Many of them are retirees that come back to help out in our schools. And I think that we ought to pause every now and then and say thank you even to those positions that don't typically get recognition. So, I thank you to all of the breakfast and lunchroom aides. They go above and beyond outside of the cafeteria, trust me. So, we appreciate them, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Chavez, sorry.
I just wanna state that I did attend the, the new board member seminar back in September. And I didn't know what to expect, a lot of information as we, we all know. But I was able to connect and meet other board members from different school districts. And I was pleasantly surprised and very pleased, though, although we are not perfect as a district, there are many, many areas that we are actually far along compared to other districts and their challenges. So, I felt pretty proud about some leeways that we've made and some improvements that other districts are still struggling with. Again, we're not perfect, but we do have some things to be proud of.
Ms. Haley?
So, a couple of weeks ago, probably a week and a half ago, I was able to attend the Strong Schools at Lewis Lemon. As you, if you don't know, RPS 205 is, is working with a certain, a certain number of schools in our community with a Strong Schools framework implementation in conjunction with Alignment Rockford. So, I was able to attend one of those Strong Schools sessions at Lewis Lemon where the community was engaged, well, families were engaged with information from the staff and the principal and getting, getting students. They explained the BAGS program, and the BAGS program discusses behavior, behavior attendance grades and socio-emotional. So, it was very well attended. We had to bring in more tables, more chairs. The families were fed and information was provided to the parents about these programs as well as the importance of students being at school and engaging in positive behaviors so that they can learn and be productive members of our community. So, I really enjoyed that and I really appreciate the collaboration with Alignment Rockford and all you guys do is amazing for our community. And we look forward to continuing this, the partnership.
Anyone else? Ms. Bennett?
Thank you. I, two things, wanted to thank Lincoln for hosting us, Mr. Sayer and his whole team for having us. My grandpa attended Lincoln in the 40s. My aunt, mom, and uncle attended in the 60s. I attended here in the 90s. And so, I very much appreciate getting to be here. This is a lovely building. I don't know of many places you can just exist in with this architecture, it's just lovely. So, thank you for hosting us, we very much appreciate you. Second, I wanted to do a shout-out for Board President Carpenter and all of his hard work the past, we'll say, month or so regarding superintendent search. He went, in my opinion, above and beyond ensuring sessions were held in places that mattered to people just for, what'd you say? Yes, communication, always keeping us updated on what was happening. But having sessions in places and meeting people where they are were very important to us all. And Mr. Carpenter made sure that happened. So, faith organizations, for example, was hosted inside a church with a very trusted pastor in town. So, he really did a lot of behind-the-scenes work and put a lot of effort into being available for media whenever needed and really just trying to make sure that the community was included. So, I appreciate him and his leadership, that's all.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aw, thanks, I appreciate it. But you also, y'all also did a lot of work getting the word out. And so, I really do, I do appreciate those words, but I know you all did a lot of work too. So, I appreciate all of your work. I also wanted to mention, I went to a NIU football game a couple of weeks ago. It was Band Day. The bands from Jefferson, Guilford, and East participated in Band Day along with about 10 or 15 other bands from the area. And they did a great job. And it was, it was definitely the most exciting thing on the football field on that six-to-three game day. So, I appreciated that. All right, thank you.
Sorry. Anyone else?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the community for completing this, the surveys and coming out to the sessions and making sure that your voice was heard and being an active participant in this, in this process. You know, this is a very important undertaking that we're having and we like to have the openness and the sharedness with our community regarding this important decision. So, I just want to say thank you from the board.
I'm sorry, one more shout-out. Mr. Carpenter and I were able to do a tour of Rockford Barbell. They're present tonight. All of their equipment is behind us. So, if anybody's interested after the meeting, maybe they can assist. But we were able to tour their brand-new facility that they have, learn about their programming that they do here, hence the equipment, in addition to Constance Lane, and learn about all of the work that they're doing with our students. So, if people are not familiar with Rockford Barbell, please go online and look them up, call them, they're lovely. But really appreciate them coming and being a great partner to Rockford Public Schools.
Okay, anything else? That concludes our report.
Thank you, Ms. Stanford. We're now moving on to the Performance and Monitoring Committee. Ms. Chavez will lead the Performance and Monitoring Committee tonight.
Thank you. Okay, so we are excited to be here at Lincoln Middle School for the committee as a whole and want to once again thank, thank Principal Jake Sayer and the students and staff at Lincoln for hosting our committee meeting tonight. Tonight's future presentation will be delivered by Principal Sayer and focused on the school improvement plan. After a brief presentation, board members will be invited to ask questions to learn more about the, about what Lincoln is doing to increase growth and change academic outcomes as an ISBE-designated intensive school. As a reminder to all board members, we will be hearing from all intensive schools this year and will receive updates on their progress three times. Principal Sayer, welcome, and please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, appreciate it. I just wanna piggyback off, Rockford Barbell came out, obviously, tonight. So, part of our school improvement plan related to this presentation is some of our community, building community partners, getting some of organizations into the school, helping us out. So, Rockford Barbell, we've created a partnership that I hope extends into, you know, ongoing years here. The feedback's been good, I know some kids go there after school programs. So, it's nothing but a positive, you know, addition to what we're trying to do with students. We've also been working heavily with Alignment Rockford, so Emily Klonicky and Antonio Ramirez. So, we're definitely pushing in the right direction and getting some of our community partners in the building. And for the first time in about, you know, this year, there's a real sense like that's happening and it's coming together in a positive way. So, that can only enhance what we're trying to do here. The more resources we have, the better it's gonna go, obviously. So, thank you guys. So, all right. So, if you look at this slide, it's just a school overview of Lincoln Middle School. All right, and if you go through there, I know we've mentioned it quite a bit, a common theme, diversity of Rockford Public Schools. Student population at Lincoln Middle School, I think, represents a very, or, sorry, our very diverse community. And I wanted to highlight that. And if you look there, I'm not sure how well you can see it. A couple of things I did wanna point out, at Lincoln Middle School, we have a couple of programs. We have a newcomer program and we have a TPI program. And we also have SLA sections that we began two years ago. And the newcomer program is essentially, we have students that are new to the country, probably two to three years. They've been in the country maybe less, and they might not have had a formal education. They're seeking refugee in the United States. And so, every year, we have two classrooms, we have two newcomer teachers supporting our students coming to us. And if you look, and again, I don't believe you can see it very well, but we have a pie chart up there kinda representing all the languages that come through Lincoln Middle School. And any given year, you're looking at about 20-plus languages. And any given year, you're looking at about 20-plus languages being spoken in the building. So quite a few students coming from other countries around the world. We have our TPI program, so, and basically students who progress with their language proficiency go through TPI to the point where they can test out and get into the gen ed population just depending on their progress. So we have quite of, like I said, a diverse population of students, very unique. And so it's very cool, a lot of different cultures, a lot of different backgrounds being represented here. And so I think that definitely adds to what we're doing here at Lincoln, those students, so. All right. If you look here, in 2023, we received a summative designation of intensive, intensive designation from the state, essentially you're the bottom 5% of schools, Title I schools in terms of performance. So there's a level of proficiency all students are trying to attain based on what the district puts out there in terms of targets. And we were at five, the bottom 5%. And so as you fast forward to 2024, we were able to move forward into a targeted designation. And so that obviously is a positive thing. Our teachers and our students definitely have been working hard. And so we had a subgroup that was in the bottom 5% in comparison to others. And that's why you're considered targeted. But as a whole, we were moving out of that into the comprehensive status for a year. All right, we're going through a cycle. If you, that will go through 2026. And we're anticipating moving into, we'll receive 2025 designations here in coming weeks. And we're anticipating we'll still be in the targeted area. So definitely making progress forward. A lot of work to be, you know, that needs to be completed. But I think with our current school improvement plan, we're heading in the right direction and data would suggest as much. Our theory of action, all right, if we establish effective tier-one systems focused on aligned instruction, optimal learning environments and professional learning, then teachers, excuse me, then teacher practices will lead to meaningful connections and improved outcomes for students. If you look at this slide, this is for goal one of our school improvement plan, which is for ELA. And this is the area we continue to make the most improvement in. We're making a lot of progress. And if you, we have a goal set for student growth percentile by 2027. We want 50% of our students to be hitting the 50 percentile mark. And if you look at 2024, we were at the 48 percentile mark in terms of student growth. And that is basically where they're measuring us based on other students in the state at the same performance level, wherever that may be, and determine how school, our students are making progress in comparison with other students. So it's, and the metrics will be changing through the state in the coming years, but essentially you're being put, you know, compared to other students, like I said, across the state. And we want to continue to, the majority of the students, you know, exceeding that 50% mark. That means we're streamlined in the learning. We're making more progress in a streamlined way. So that's the goal. And by 2027, like we said, we wanted to be at the 50 percentile mark. And we're on pace to do that. So if you look at our strategic actions, and this kind of goes hand to hand with all content areas, we're trying to be aligned across the board, trying to, for specific purposes of, like I said, to streamline learning for students. You know, when we talk strategies, when we talk instructional approach, we want to have some common ground so students aren't going to five, six, seven different classrooms and relearning how to, you know, through instruction, how to complete a task. We want to have a common approach of students understand how to, you know, succeed, meet expectations with the learning. So if we, the couple of things we're doing is we have a PLC planning doc. It's a common planning doc we utilize. And it's essentially just a lesson plan, but it's very strategic. It's aligned to PLC-type questions, professional learning, community questions that drive the instruction. And we're looking at student evidence and making decisions based on the student evidence we're collecting to help inform our decisions. It's just data-driven is what we're trying to do. And we're trying to be more informed in why we make the decisions we make. A second thing, we're going into in our second year is our CHAMP's initiative. And essentially, CHAMP's is something we piggybacked off of Constance Lane. So part of what we're doing with our SIP plan is trying to be aligned with our feeder schools, community partners. Again, so students aren't having to relearn expectations, you know, how to do school in a different building. And CHAMP's is essentially just how we operate as a building, you know, just managing our students in common areas, the classroom, in a unified approach. And also professional learning is a big part of what we're trying to do. We're diving into safe and civil schools. We're in our second year of CHAMP's, as I just mentioned. We will extend that into explicit instruction. So taking it beyond the management piece to how we plan for students. And basically, we want to, we have a lot of students, we have struggling learners. The ability levels across the board, you know, can vary from anywhere from lacking foundational skills all the way to high school level skills. We have students that will attend East High School, for example, for math courses. So we're trying to meet the needs of a lot of different students. And so that's just being intentional and why we plan, like I said, using student evidence, the data we have available to us to make decisions on what they need. And getting better at differentiating that instruction so they understand how to meet the needs of those varying levels of student abilities. And the other piece is our CRTL work, excuse me, CRTL work. We're partnering our learning partners, ULLC/Rockford University. And that's, we partnered within the last two years. And so basically, what we're trying to do is it's culturally, excuse me, responsive teaching and learning, a training that we'll be engaging in ongoing. And so the partners from RU and ULLC continue to come in. We had our first kind of session last spring introducing it. The state has standards related to that. And just so, basically, just getting to know our students better. You know, understanding their backgrounds and experiences, having them be a part of our school in terms of being co-creators of what we're trying to do. It was mentioned earlier, student voice. So we're really trying to engage our students and work with them. This needs to be a place they want to come to. And obviously, better results, outcomes will be better when we do that. And so when we monitor the evidence, big one is IAR each year. You know, it's what we're measured by, what gets publicized. And then through the course of the year, we have district-level benchmark testing. And then the big piece is our PLCs, as I've mentioned a couple of times, just really being intentional and being able to collect data at that level. Because that's the real-time evidence of how we're doing. And we want to get good at that. Our second slide, related goals, is our math goal. The strategies, the evidence essentially is the same. If you look at the strategies, or excuse me, the professional learning piece, we did partner with our curriculum resource people to provide year-long training. And that's occurring at all the middle school level schools. And so again, trying to be aligned across the board and really helping our students. That is probably our greatest area of need. It is in this district. In terms of that, we have students that move quite a bit. And so when they go to one school to the next, we're trying to be aligned amongst the principals as well. Big district, but the conversations are the right ones. And so we're doing some things that will help. And then if you look at our goals, 2027, the same goal. We want to be at the 50% mark, student growth percentile mark. And in 2024, we were at 46% of students. So on pace, we think we're doing some good things here. And the data, hopefully, will continue to show that. All right, our, excuse me, our goal three is related to chronic absenteeism. This was brought up before. This is an area we need to improve in. It is a struggle. And we need to get, getting, excuse me, students to school. And so our goal is to decrease that number each year. And so if you look at 2024, if you can't see it, we were at 40, 30% of students missed 10% or more. So that's how it's being measured by the state, if you're missing 10% or more of school days. And that's excused, unexcused. So it's just accumulation of days. And that essentially adds up to about 17 days, give or take. So that is one of our priorities. It's one of the areas we're measured in by the state. And obviously, students being in the building means more opportunities to learn. And that's the goal. And so we are continuing to work hard on that. We have incentives. We have staff members devoted to that work and just trying to be a lot more intentional, as I know everybody is. And so we will continue to work on that. We have support staff, like I said. We have an attendance plan that we're working with our MTSS staff from district level. So multi-tier support, a system of support. So we continue to work with those, you know, that department to help build this out because there's getting the, you know, the global view, what's happening across the district, what's being effective in other schools. And obviously, we're going to try to adopt some of those, you know, strategies. And then, as was mentioned earlier, CHAMP's and then BACS. You know, being real intentional about communicating with our parents, our students about their on-track progress. You know, going into middle school, ninth grade is probably one of the most critical years, if not the most critical. And so we're being, for example, in eighth grade, we're communicating quarterly with parents, kind of doing a mock credit system to help build their understanding of what it means to earn credits in high school and what happens if you don't. Because our students, what we're finding in our parents, our families, don't understand what that all means when they get to high school. And it's quite a shock. And, you know, it's kind of, before you know, it's too late. And we want to have those skills on hand for those students so they can be successful in ninth grade and springboard into the pathways. And closing thoughts, Lincoln Middle School will be, continue to grow and improve outcomes for students if we do the following, implement our school improvement plan with fidelity, effectively make data-driven decisions and use our tiered supports to our advantage. Again, being, understanding the data and making good decisions to help kids at all levels. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Sayer. Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Bennett.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Can you just briefly explain kind of your choice in utilizing CHAMP's given kind of your large population of students from Constance Lane in particular?
Yeah, so Constance Lane, all of the students from Constance Lane come to Lincoln. And so the idea is a, like I said, a universal approach to just managing behaviors. It's a positive approach. And essentially, what it is, is a, you have to plan, you know, how to manage your classroom, just like you have to plan for instruction. And so we actually had one of Constance Lane's APs come up to us two years ago. And so she was familiar with it and the students were familiar with the language. And so that, it appears that it was greatly, it was helpful. Let me just put it that way. Students understood the language. For example, you're at a level zero, meaning nobody's talking, we're testing. Little things like that, if I go into every classroom, I'm bound to be more successful because I understand it and it's being consistently communicated. And that's, you know, a big part of it, being consistent.
Thank you. I really appreciate the thinking of, you know, the demographic and the youth, where they're coming from and what would make sense to have that be continued from elementary school to middle school and really like looking at what their needs are and continuing. That's great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you again, Principal Sayer. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next, we will hear from Ronnie Storm, Director of Health Services, who will update the board on the process used to determine the future of the school-based health center and propose a new partnership. On tonight's agenda, you will see the executive summary for this proposed partnership. Ms. Storm will begin to explain the process for the board. The administration is seeking board action at the next board meeting. Welcome. You're good, you're good.
As stated earlier, my name is Ronnie Storm. I am serving as the Director of Health Services with Rockford Public Schools. And I'm here today to talk to you about the School-Based Health Center at Auburn, which, as you guys likely know, has been sitting empty since Crusader left in July. We do have a vision provider there, but not a medical provider. So tonight, I'm seeking guidance from the board on the next steps that we should do to return a comprehensive social, emotional, and mental wraparound healthcare for our students in our community. And I believe that there's two potential pathways that we can do. The first one is a request for proposal, RFQ, you know, sending it out to our community partners and seeing, gauging the interest in serving our community there. And then the second is there is an interested party that has reached out to us. It's Miles Square. They are a state-accredited school-based health center provider already. And that is outlined in the executive summary. Now, if you're asking why we already have interest, I serve on the Rockford Regional Health Council Board, which is a collaboration of community healthcare providers and other community entities that help negate the healthcare disparities. So it does include UW Health, OSF, Mercy Health, Rosecrance, UIC, I'm probably forgetting a couple more, and they're there. And during some of our discussions, we've discussed the exiting of Crusader and that is when Miles Square reached out. So I'm just going to give you a brief synopsis on Miles Square. Miles Square operates out of the LP Johnson Center, which is actually in the same block. It's just kitty corner from here. They are affiliated with UI Health, which is the medical side of the University of Illinois of Chicago. They're also affiliated with the UI, with UIC Medical School. So they're training our up-and-coming physicians here in town and then other providers. So I look forward to your decision on the way that we should go in re-establishing the much-needed healthcare, comprehensive wraparound healthcare that we need for our students that can be provided at Auburn Healthcare Center.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Storm. We're going to open up the floor to any questions from the board members? Any questions? Ms. Pearson?
Thank you. I just have a quick question. Do you also work with students with chronic illnesses and associated with, or working with them with their academic success? Are you a part of a team with, for that?
I'm part of the health team in Rockford. So I work, I work with all of my nurses. And we do manage, on an individual school basis, students with chronic health conditions. Now, that being said, with the School-Based Health Center, when it was there, we did partner and send our chronic students with, especially asthmatics. We would send students with asthma over, get them checked out, hopefully, three to four times a year as it's suggested, to also ensure that they had their inhalers. Unfortunately, right now, we can't do that there, but that is something that should be part of the process when we are, if we do send out the request for proposal. But it is also something that Miles Square is very interested in and already doing in Cook County with their five, did I say that? I don't know if I said that. They have, okay, the 30 years' experience and they run five of the Cook County school-based health centers out there. So that's already in their mission and their plan.
Thank you.
Ms. Bennett?
For the cost that you're requesting or is being requested, can you just give kind of a brief overview of what exactly would be included with the startup cost?
So that, we had very limited talks with Miles Square. That was an estimate that they threw out to provide the equipment, basically refurnishing the School-Based Health Center and to start off the first year. the school-based health center and to start off the first year with salaries. Now, the hope is that it's covered with grants. The reason that this number was given this year is it was already too late to apply for grants. So this, but the hope is, moving forward, they would be covered by grants and charging insurance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, Mr. Carpenter?
Thanks. So first question, I guess, is timeframe. If it was Miles Square, it seems like we could do it quicker, but I might be wrong about that.
That would be the hope, yes.
And like, what would that timeframe be?
Their estimate was one to two months, once they got the go-ahead. And, you know, we, obviously, building the program so that we're building it appropriately, taking community input, you know, what services are needed, making sure that we have the right supports in place for parents and students. We're a little bit different than the Chicago system, so kind of a learning curve on that. But in our talks, I would say that they'd probably be up and running within four or five months, full capacity.
Thank you. And then the executive summary says that they're the only local health provider that has expressed interest in maintaining the clinic there.
Correct.
Okay. And so if we did the RF, the request for proposals, would we, I mean, I guess we would hope that there would be an out-of-area provider that would be interested, or do you think?
My hope would be to keep it local, because there is a huge gap in primary care physicians for our students and our families. So my hope would be to keep it local so that we can keep them tied to local agencies for that wraparound care. It'd be very hard for an out of, out of our community district to come in with no ties here and provide the social, emotional counseling support that's already, that they've already established care with. Like, somebody like Miles Square, they're already working with some of our counseling. They're working with our churches. They have those things, as would another local organization, I would hope. So ideally, to make this a really, truly wraparound, you know, whole child, whole family care, in my opinion, it should be local.
Yeah, I understand that, I guess. So, I mean, if we did the request for proposal, do you think there would be any other local interest, based on your, I guess, your involvement in the?
So I'm pretty vocal.
Community, okay.
And at these meetings, I've brought it up at probably four or five, and not one CEO has stopped me, other than Miles Square. And then they continue to reach out and have continued to reach out.
Ms. Bennett?
Is it, I think this is true, and if I can do some research at a later time, if you don't know as well, but does U of I and Miles Square, aren't they the health providers for the juvenile detention center?
They are.
The youth that are there as well?
I do believe so, which is where a lot of their other communal contacts come into play.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. And I think as well as the Winnebago County Jail as well. I think they provide the, okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that side of the table? No?
Okay. I can't see lights, that's why. I have, I do actually, I have a question. I guess, just wanting to know, maybe this could be provided to the board members, but basically, like, what has been the data for when Crusader Clinic was the provider? Like, what were the stats on that? The data of how many students they served? I mean, I haven't seen, I don't know if it was provided to us or not. It could have been, I just maybe missed that. You know, and also wanting to know, like, what are some of their obstacles and challenges that they had that, then we can go back to you and be like, are these, you know, you're able to overcome those challenges? So I guess more background information is what I would like?
I can gather that. I have that data.
Okay.
I have that data. And, you know, before COVID, it was a very, very productive partnership. At COVID, when we came out of the schools, it was hard to get students there. And we've just, we've had a hard time recovering, her maintaining, because there was one provider there. So we just had a hard time recovering. And Crusader did change their model a little bit, which was their reason for leaving, when they told us in spring that they had changed their model, and they didn't feel like their medical model was lining up with the school-based health center model the same. So I can, I can type, I can get that and get you some challenges and some things that I think we've learned and my other people in the team have learned along the way.
Yeah, that would be, I think it would be helpful in making a decision. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? The startup costs you mentioned are pretty sizable because we weren't able to apply for grants. What would the timing be if we waited to apply for grants in the next cycle? How far back would that put us?
So I'm not able to answer that question. I'm a great nurse. I'm really not great with grants or hospital funding. So I can ask those questions of some of our grant writers and maybe reach out to a couple of the other partners that apply for some of the same community grants. I know, you know, Terry White's a great resource over at Crusader, so, and he did that before, so I will gladly ask those questions.
That would be great.
Anyone else?
Maybe just one question, this is probably for Ms. Goldsmith, actually, but the, we wouldn't have to do a request for a proposal for this, or we could choose to go with Miles Square without doing a request for a proposal. Is that accurate? Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Storm. Appreciate it. Okay, so finally, we'll review the brief consent agenda. Are there any items board members wish to highlight for comments or questions? No one? Nope? Okay, thank you. And that concludes performance and monitoring.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. We are now moving on to the Planning and Development Committee. Ms. Pearson is leading us in that.
Thank you, President Carpenter. A memorandum of agreement between Rockford, or the Board of Education of Rockford Public Schools and Strike Academy. Jefferson's outdoor basketball and softball fields sit unused during significant portions of the year. Meanwhile, Jefferson baseball and softball programs lack regular access to high-quality indoor training facilities during the winter months. Strike Academy, a travel club, baseball organization currently rents Jefferson's baseball fields during times when Jefferson athletics are not scheduled. Strike maintains its own indoor facility equipped with batting cages, pitching tunnels, and radar guns. Under this partnership, Jefferson baseball and softball program have access to Strike's indoor facility during the winter, preparing athletes for spring sessions. Strike has proven to be a reliable partner, using the fields responsibly and helping maintain them in good condition. Are there any questions on the MOU agree meant for Strike Academy? If not, we'll move on to the resolution calling of public hearing concerning the intent of Board of Education of Rockford Schools, District 205, Winnebago, and Boone Counties, Illinois, to sell not to exceed fifty million working cash funds, bonds, and not to exceed ten million school fire prevention and safety bonds. I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Brown to discuss recommending that the Board of Education approve resolution calling for a public hearing concerning the intent to sell working cash bonds, school fire prevention, and safety bonds.
Okay, thank you. This is the borrowing phase of the facility master plan, so we have invested about thirty million dollars so far, which was what we had planned to spend from cash reserves. So we are at a point now where we are ready to begin the issuance of bonds. So this is the first step in doing that, and it pairs up actually with C below, which is the actual resolution declaring the intent to issue the bonds. So this is the first step, calling for the public hearing. C is actually the resolution declaring the intention to actually sell the bonds. So this is kind of a two-step process in this. We have worked with Stiefel to run the numbers on this. We can do the issuance of these bonds without increasing the bond and the interest levy, so there's actually no tax increase from this initial fifty million dollar borrowing. So any questions on those?
Are there any questions for Dr. Brown regarding the recommendation? So the resolution to approve the public hearing will be brought to the board at October 21st, 2025 meeting for approval. The public hearing will be at the November 18th, 2025 board meeting. Dr. Brown have touched on C, the resolution declaring the intention of the fifty million working cash fund, fund bonds of Rockford School District 205, Winnebago, Boone Counties, Illinois, for the purpose of increasing working cash fund of said school district, and directing that notice of such intention to be published in the manner provided by law. Interest transfer from working, interest transfer from working cash funds to capital funds. Administration is recommending that the Board of Education approve transfer of earned interest from working cash fund to the Capital Project Fund in the amount of four million six hundred, or, yeah, four million, four point six million.
Correct.
This transfer will be used to fund part of the district's thirty million cash outlay of the facility's master plan. Are there any questions for Mr. Dr. Brown regarding the recommendation? Now, questions, the resolution to approve the transfer of earned interest from working cash fund to the Capital Project Fund will be brought forward to vote at the October 21st, 2025 board meeting. Facility master plan update, Dr. Brown will continue with that.
Okay, so you have a write-up in the packet regarding the facility master plan funding options. We have discussed these a number of times over the last two years, and really just wanted to give you an update on where we are at with reaching out to the other districts regarding placing the one percent sales tax on the March ballot. So we have worked with the Harlem School District, the Winnebago School District. Both of those have gotten their boards to approve putting the one percent tax on. We have also worked with Hananega, Kaniknik, Prairie Hill, and Sherwin, which are, you know, kind of referred to as Hananega and the feeder schools. And all those districts have also had discussions with their board and plan on placing the resolution in their October board meeting for approval. We've also been working with Durand and Pecatonica, as well as South Beloit. So, you know, the districts are moving forward with this. There seems to be a general consensus that everyone would like to give this a try. And so, including our district, we believe we'll have over ninety percent of the school districts in the county that will be supportive of placing this on the ballot for a vote. So that's where we stand on, you know, the facility master plan funding options.
Questions, Ms. Bennett?
For the boards that have already voted and approved, is it the one percent? They're all on the same page for the rate?
Yes. Everyone was inclined to go for the full one percent.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? So the resolution for the public hearing on the intent to issue working cash funds and the resolution of intent issuing working cash fund bonds will be brought to the board on the 21st of this year for approval.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I go back, just a question of that?
Sure. President Carpenter?
Thank you. So can you tell us again what the, I probably ask this every meeting, but what the timeframe is then to be on the March ballot?
Good question. So the timeframe would be that if we're inclined to do so as well with the other districts, we would need to pass this in November to be able to have it certified by the Regional Office of Education to the county clerk, no later than mid-December, so it could be added to the March ballot. So the action would not be required in the October meeting on this resolution, but absolutely would have to be done in November to be able to meet that certification deadline to the regional office, so they could then certify it to the clerk's office.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, one more question, sorry. For the, I don't know the proper word, but I want to use the word campaign. So for the campaign to happen between mid-December and March, the cost of that, is that shared amongst other districts? Or because we're the largest district, would we take on the cost of that? Or how does that work?
Yeah, so that, the school districts are actually not allowed to run a campaign. All we can do is provide information to the community. So if there was a campaign that people in the community wanted to rally behind, they would have to do that privately, and we cannot actually support any kind of a vote yes campaign. It actually has to be done outside of the school district.
Okay, so I'll use a different word, because that's not the part that I meant. So the awareness group, so the people that would go out and educate the community on what we're doing with facilities?
Sure.
The updates, going to the schools. So those, that group of people, the communications team or whoever is doing that? Any additional costs? Or maybe there won't be, maybe it'll just be staff time, and that's fine, too. But any cost would just be something that would be staff time?
Staff time. It would be staff time. And we do have commitment from the other districts to actually go out and help in their respective communities to actually do this work. So, you know, it wouldn't be just, you know, myself or a group of other people that would be doing community meetings. Obviously, we do those here, but Harlem has said that they would help, Hananega and, you know, Kaniknik, and, you know, all those other school districts are willing to get out and get in the community to get the word out.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, item F, FY27 and multi-year projections and preview of 2025 tax levy. Dr. Brown will take.
What do we got up here?
Present.
All right. This is a sheet that you have seen in previous years. And what we're looking at right now are three different tax levy scenarios, as we have done in the past. So the first levy option would be A, which is no CPI or no new property, basically keep it level with what we levied the current year, actually in December of last year. And you can see that that takes the tax rate to four point three six two four. Option B would be to take it only on new property. And as you can see, we've had a significant increase in new property over the last year. So this is a lot of real good new property growth in the community. So that's a real positive sign for us. So the additional revenue with going with option B, which is to just take the levy on new property only, would be about eight hundred and sixty-six thousand. And then, if you look at C, which is the maximum allowable amount we could take, which would be based on a two point nine percent CPI increase, because we're in a tax cap county, and we can only levy for the greater of the CPI increase of five percent. So the CPI increase in December of 2024, which governs what we can levy for in December of 2025, is actually that CPI indicator, and that was two point nine percent. So you can see that that would result in additional new revenue to the district of five million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, plus or minus. So those are the three options. We will bring these back again in November for your review. And at the November meeting, we will be looking for you to give us direction on which one of three, these three options you'd like to pursue, so we can make sure for the December meeting, when you guys actually approve the levy, we have the right paperwork in place for the December approval. So again, timeline here is to get these in front of you, give you a month to think about what you guys would like to do, make a decision in November for us, so we know at the December meeting, we're bringing the right paperwork forward. So those are the three. So those are the three options. And obviously, there could be something that you would do in between any of these three. But this is the, the, what we did previously, December 2024 in A, and then the maximum that we would allow, be allowed to do in option C. So questions on that?
No questions? The resolutions, the resolution to approve the tentative 2025 tax levy will be brought to the board in November for approval. And the resolution to approve the 2025 tax levy will be brought to the board in December for approval. Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Okay.
Are there any questions on regards to the prevent, preview consent items, A through F? Oh, I'm so sorry. My apologies. Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Okay, so we're just going to run through real quick, kind of a high level. We've tried to make some projections for next year already for FY27. As you guys can probably imagine, the outlook on revenue is pretty sketchy right now. There are a lot of different scenarios that are floating around out in Washington DC as far as how our federal funding might work. And we just don't have a clear picture on a lot of the financial things. I will let you know that the state of Illinois is also seeming to have a little bit of a dip in their revenues right now. Their corporate tax revenues are down about 31% from where they projected them to be. And those numbers are bearing out in numbers that we're seeing in our corporate personal property replacement tax receipts so far this year. So we're about 20% lower than where we thought we were going to be on our corporate personal property replacement tax receipts. So, you know, we are starting to see some chinks in the armor at the state level as well. So just some awareness on that, too. I'm going to slide around over here. I'm, I'm okay. You know what, I'll just turn this. I think I'll be, I'll be okay. I can see now. So revenue assumptions, what we're looking at there is an increase in evidence-based funding of 5%. That would include the tier funding. We did receive a nice increase in tier funding this last year because a lot of the other larger districts actually went from tier one into tier two. And so the, the number of districts that remained in tier one with the highest level of deed actually got more money than they were anticipating. We think that what's going to happen is that may revert back to the way it was this, this last year, the year before, the current year. And we're probably looking at more like $10 million or a 5% increase. And I'll show you a slide on that one real quick. The assumptions that you see in here have us doing option C on the levy that we just looked at. And we're estimating that corporate personal property replacement tax to stay flat. So real quick, for the evidence-based funding, you can see here that we had in the blue section for the current fiscal year, we had that rather large increase in the tier funding. We're assuming that we're going to go back to something more like what we had in fiscal year 2025. So probably in that $10 million mark for the evidence-based funding. The property tax levy we just discussed, you can see there 2.9% on the CPI. Property tax levy background? Yeah, the, the, it's split between two years. Obviously, you know, we pay taxes at different times, they straddle the fiscal years. So the money actually comes in over two fiscal years. You can see what the Consumer Price Index has done over the last several years. You can see some real high-water marks on, you know, what CPI has done. And then you can see where the property tax revenues have been over the last several years. The next slide has got kind of the tax levy dollars in total there, along with significant EAV growth. You can see that we've had really, really nice growth after a lot of flat years in the mid-2010s. The CPRT assumptions, you can see there, as we discussed, we had a number of years where we had some really, really, really high receipts. That was due to, a lot to the amount of money that was popped in during the COVID years. And that resulted in really, really high tax revenues for the state. A lot of those came back to the, to the district. And, you know, we have used a, a good chunk of those for, not, not just what we're working on right now with the current Facility Master Plan, but some of the other projects that we did, you know, at Jefferson and, and work that we did at East. And, you know, a lot of work on those kind of projects, too. You can see that we're projecting that we're going to be flat, you know, coming into FY27. The expenditure assumptions, you can see what we've got there, plus or minus 4% for salary increases, plus or minus 3%, which is basically inflation for supplies. And we're hoping that the healthcare benefits are actually going to drop back down to actually where we've been over the last couple of years. We did have a really, really big spike this past year, and we've taken some steps to try and reduce those. This is kind of the bad news slide coming up here with the multi-year projections on the operating funds. Again, you know, that uncertainty of revenue, the employment contracts that we still have, you know, out there that we have not finalized yet, you can see. And then kind of the multi-year spends that, we took a break on some of these and we picked them back up this year. And we're going to need to continue to do that, especially with buses and technology. So I know this slide's hard to read, but if you look at the, you know, what you've got on your screen or in your packet, you can see that, you know, we're looking at a pretty big projected deficit for FY27. Right now, it's looking like about $13 million. And I will tell you that this is almost 100% in the education fund, which is our largest fund. We've got work to do here. The PRISM work that, you know, we have talked about and you guys had approved us to move forward with a number of months ago is well underway right now. And, you know, we're hoping to identify enough savings to completely close that gap. So that's our work right now. Again, these are very preliminary, just because there is so much uncertainty out there with, with where we think, you know, the, the revenues are going to come in. So happy to answer any questions now. And again, these are very preliminary numbers.
Any questions? If not, if not, that completes the report for the Planning and Development Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. We're now at the petitions and communications portion of our meeting. When we invite the public to make comments, slurs, profanity, and harassment will not be tolerated. If anyone uses unacceptable language, they may be directed to immediately surrender the remainder of their speaking time and be restricted from public comment in the future. The board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you will be contacted in a timely manner by staff. Each speaker will be allowed no more than five minutes to address the board, and it's not appropriate to discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in open meetings. And I believe there are clocks present that would show the five minutes. Or, okay, I think Mr. Phillips will have a clock so that you can see the time remaining. We thank you for your cooperation with our guidelines. And our speaker tonight is Pamela Hill and Brad.
Good evening. I am very grateful for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I want to talk about Illinois House Bill 3247, which although signed into law, really does not come into effect or have to come into effect until July of 2026. This law makes it clear that a school may not allow an immigration agent to enter a school site or school district facility for any purpose without providing valid identification, a written statement of purpose, and a valid judicial warrant. Also clearly stated is that every school district or school must create and adopt a policy that ensures compliance with this law. And so I'm here to ask you as the school board to do three things. The first, adopt this new code before the end of 2025. The second, which is a necessity then, is write and adopt a policy that addresses every possible contingency. For example, who will respond to a request for entry by immigration agents and meet them off-site of the school to discuss the request? Will that person clearly understand what does and does not constitute a legal entry? If a legal entry appears to be called for, how will that be handled and by whom? What action will be taken if agents come on-site without following proper procedure? What will be done to protect our children who take the bus or who wait for parents to pick them up? And third, provide this written code and policy to every teacher, every school employee, and ideally post it on your website. A policy and the means by which it is to be followed is, as you know, of little use unless everyone is familiar with it. Additionally, a violation of these provisions of the code may be cause for a lawsuit, ignorance being no excuse. There has been a frightening escalation of activity by ICE agents, particularly in the Chicago area, but they have been here in Rockford. And many parents are now terrified to let their children out of their sight, and yet they are bound by law to send their children to school. Finally, as you have entered into a search for a new school superintendent, I urge you to make certain that this need is high on the list of that person's priorities as well as your own. I thank you.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, I just want to thank again Lincoln for hosting our meeting tonight. I also want to thank Kim and Erin again for their work on the technology. I know they were working hard to make sure that everything was in working order before the meeting started, and I appreciate their work getting it in order as the meeting went on. And I know they've been working for weeks to make sure that was working. So I appreciate their work. And with that, I think I would take a motion and a second to adjourn.
Someone?
Second.
Thank you, we're adjourned.